Doing math in a second. Next up, just to cover my bases. The, some of you may say, well Andy, we've heard about this thing, the circumstantial highway. Because if you look at the tax maps and the surveyors have to show that the, the records that the surveys come up with show that the property immediately north of us is for the proposed circumstantial highway. And I, I'm gonna give you a couple pieces of evidence that can make you see that the circumstantial highway is as dead as they come. Alright? And the first off is my personal knowledge, because some years ago, when I sat on the planning board and zoning board in town, I was Litchfield's, Pat Jewitt and I were Litchfield representatives within the Hampshire Regional Planning Commission. And I was on the exhibit committee with the Hampshire Regional Planning Commission, and we had a meeting with Carol Murray, the then commissioner of the Department of Transportation. And she was there primarily at the time, and years ago, to talk about the expansion of the FBA return back to Nashua. And she was asked about the circumstantial highway, and she simply said, it's dead. There's no local support. We are not, we are carrying it on our ten-year transportation plan, but it's unfunded and it's going to go away entirely. And that was maybe ten years ago, when I was there. Secondly, I want to pass out stuff from the DOT website. And this is a two-part, I'm gonna say one. I'll walk you through this, because this is one thing that I don't want you to think if there's any chance that the circumstantial highway is gonna impact Litchfield.
There's two here, John?
There is two.
Is it two? Oh, thank you.
There are two that look like this. That and the formal plan. Ready?
Yep.
State of New Hampshire has a ten-year transportation plan that gets updated every two years. And the way it gets updated is the DOT provides installation, the governor, the governor provides the proposed transportation plan to the legislature, and the legislature works through, and ultimately approves the ten-year transportation plan. The first document that I gave you kind of traces that, if you go from the bottom up. You can see government's submission to the legislature, legislative review, the House approves, Senate Transportation Committee approves. I heard in the news that the Senate had approved recently, within the past about two weeks, and couldn't nail down anything online for that, but we'll make that representation to you. So what was proposed, and ultimately approved, is a long document, a 200-page document, and I excerpted out, and this portion, I'm gonna just hand it out, the key pages. And what I'm gonna show to you is that there's no circumstantial highway on the ten-year plan, funded or unfunded. So you have the ten-year transportation plan, and then the next page shows the funded portion of the transportation plan, sort of alphabetically. So I skipped over Allen Town and Barnesworth and went right to where Litchfield would be, and you see Lincoln to Litchfield, Lincoln to Loudoun. We have nothing for it in the ten-year plan, which is a little depressing, but certainly nothing to do with circumstantial highways. So then I thought, well, maybe they listed on demand. So if we go another couple pages, Manchester, Meredith, Meredith, and you see Merrimack on page forty-three of the document, and there are a couple projects for Merrimack. This is 101A, Hammer Street. There are some bridges, and then there are the NPO funding, which is general all-purpose funding to the regional planning commissions, which are the planning organizations for the state. They're not calling out anything. And the circumstantial was, it was affected by us, it was only Litchfield and Merrimack. So that was the funded portion. But just for fun, the DOT also lists unfunded projects. Kind of wishful thinking in the future. And you can see that we have unfunded projects, different categories of projects, and you can go through for yourself, but there's nothing mentioning the circumstantial highway ten years out, unfunded. So I think it's safe to say, from my first-hand experience, and what DOT is telling us today, and then my third point here is, in addition to all this, I think it's fair to say that none of us have heard any scuttlebutt, or any talk, or any proposal about anyone reviving the North half of the circumstantial highway. I think we would all agree with that. So the town of Litchfield owns the property to the north of us. We don't know if the town has any plans, if it doesn't have any plans, I think it's fair to say that the circumstantial highway is not going to impact this property. Now coming to, alright, coming back to more focused on this application. I wanna show you the Hudson zoning, which is immediately to the south of us, and some, Google Maps. Here's a Hudson zoning. And then John, next up is the Google Maps.
The Google map of the area.
Keep an HP in business, Andrew. So you keep an HP in business.
This will be exhibit F.
Which one?
Uh, the colored Hudson map. And then the other one will be G.
Google map?
You got it.
Turning, just turning quickly to the Hudson map. You can see that we are in the R2 district, and the area, all surrounding us are cul-de-sacs and residential areas that I cited the dimensional requirements for the R2 district. Hudson zoning on this 334, that's 27, is part of one-acre zoning, under 200 square inch frontage, thirty feet front setback, fifteen side and fifteen rear setback, very similar to Litchfield, our residential district. And then even, and then coming to the Google map, if we just look around the Google map, you can see that we really don't have any commercial or industrial uses in our area that we're talking about. Even though it's owned, a southwest commercial, we really don't have any big, big businesses. It's mostly residential all around us. Immediately south of us, we have Wilson Farm Field, we have state property across the street, and then heading down into Hudson, you see those cul-de-sacs and all the homes in that area. Heading north on the Tutson Bancroft Highway, on the, immediately next to us is the Daltons. And then the Dalton Street has a small garage that they use, and it is a small commercial business, I don't know a lot about it, and they don't speak to it. But beyond that, moving up across the street, you have the residential, the Mobile Home Park, the Wilson Mobile Home Park that goes in there. You have the Amingdale Housing Complex, you see that long cul-de-sac dropping down to the Merrimack River. And then you have a handful of small residential lots that run up, you know, up to the Redonis Farmhouse. There are a couple small businesses in there, Jolt Electric has their small home occupation business case out there. Noel's Tree Farmers to Sale, that has a house out in front of the town, they do say, they have a business, but they have a house right in front of their old flower business as well. So I think you can see that we have, despite the zoning, we have mostly residential surrounding this, this area. Finally, for my exhibits, I have a letter from Dan Bergeron. I'll turn them over to you. And the letter speaks for itself, he's a longtime experienced developer and real estate broker, and he's looked at our plans, and believes there's no impacting the surrounding properties.
You need to make this an exhibit two, probably, just to be certain. And you will call it exhibit eight, just to keep it consistent.
Should I read that, so everybody knows?
Uh, yeah, it wouldn't hurt. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind just reading that.
I'm just gonna read this letter. It is a letter from Daniel Bergeron, licensed real estate broker, dated May 6, 2014, addressed to attorney Andrew Pearlman. Dear Attorney Pearlman, I have been a license, I have been a New Hampshire licensed real estate broker for over forty years, and am very knowledgeable of the real estate market in the greater Nashua area. I have carefully reviewed the plans for a nine-lot subdivision, and have visited the site at 300 Webster Street, 1 Charles Bancroft Highway. In my professional opinion, the creation of nine additional residences will have no negative effect on the surrounding property values. Sincerely, Daniel Bergeron.
Okay. I assume, are you at the point where you wanna go through the points? Does the board have any questions for Attorney Pearlman before he gets into the specifics on the request for variance? No? Okay, proceed.
The variance is not contrary to public interest, and the variance is within the spirit of the ordinance. And I bring these two together because our case cases, these two, are very related and integrated contracts. At least since 2011, the figure of Smith tells us that when we look at whether something is contrary to public interest, or there's something within the spirit of the ordinance, to consider whether the proposal would unduly and to a marked degree violate the basic zoning objectives. And so if we look at our basic zoning objectives, section 100, purpose and authority of the Litchfield zoning ordinance, the purpose of our ordinance is to lessen congestion in the streets, secure for safety in panic and other dangers, provide adequate light and air, prevent overcrowding, avoid undue concentration, you get areas to leave themselves, adequate schools and facilities, proper use of natural resources. We don't believe that this proposal is violating the basic zoning objectives, but we don't stop there under our case law that recently came out, 2007, 2011. We also look into these two criteria, whether the, our proposal could alter the essential character of a neighborhood, and threaten public health, safety, or welfare. And I don't believe we have that here. I believe we've provided sufficient evidence to show that the residential lots in this area are very much common and alike to the residential lots all around this area, particularly in Hudson. And with the properly designed road, eliminating a curb cut, a, the five homes we propose here, we don't see any threat to public health, safety, or welfare. The substantial justice criteria, the GBA handle kind of outlines a balancing test, whether there's harm to the town, or the gain to the applicant, you know, whatever's greater. We don't see any harm to the town in allowing this proposal to go forward, and certainly the applicant, you know, to use this land. There was a footnote, it would be, it would be very awkward and unusual to have this road with homes just on one side, within Hudson, and have just a dead land up here. Because, there are a couple points here. You don't see a commercial use going back here, and I think it's reasonable, it would be unreasonable to say, well Andy, you could put a McDonald's, you could put a bank, you could put an office back here, because remember, it would be asking us to put in a, a road right in here, because remember, Hudson's going forward, so we'd have to put in a road, an access road in here, whatever would be here would be behind two homes. And I doubt very much any user of this property, an office, or small bank, or whatever, anything you could possibly think of, would take the time to cross this wetland to get to this small area back here. So I think without this variance, there's very harm to the applicant, because this land becomes pretty much dead land, and it'd be very awkward to have homes on the one side, but not on the other side of the roadway. There's a 2007 case, we don't get many cases with substantial justice, but it suggested that we'd also look to whether the proposed use is consistent with the area. And again, between the Google maps and the Hudson tax maps, or zoning map rather, we believe that we provide evidence for that factor. The nine lots in here would be consistent with the area. The value of the surrounding properties, we have the Dan Bergeron letter, the homes, you can expect it to be comparable to any homes that we have in Litchfield, not, there isn't much of a market for the McMansions anymore. These would be homes in the, probably $200,000 range, $350,300 range, similar to, pointing after that. And for the hardship piece, again, this is probably one of the more unique sites that I've come across, and suggests that probably one of the more unique sites this board, not a typical dimensional or use area. The, we don't see that there is going to be, you know, any possible use of the, that could comply with the zoning. If you turn to section 701, we have a list of A through O of permitted uses in this district. And remember, we're just talking about the Litchfield piece, so we would have to be putting any one of these on that, Litchfield, little triangle, Litchfield portion. Banks, bank, bank, and grant offices, retail, general retail, not including automotive, restaurants not including fast food, civic centers, professional offices, healthcare facilities, personal offices, bed and breakfast, indoor theater, churches, the list goes on. The only one that could possibly qualify is agriculture, but Len Vigent is not a farmer, and I doubt very much if you have homes here, that you're gonna be able to find a farmer who's gonna take the time to come in here on a regular basis and farm, there's three acres roughly up front here before you get to the wetland. And again, the wetland laws don't always apply to farming activities. We don't see that this is really a real possibility for this area for future agricultural use, especially with the Hudson portion of the project going forward. We don't see that the permitted uses apply, and given the area and given the constraints, we don't see that there's a fair and substantial relationship prohibiting this use, given the general purposes of the ordinance, again, getting back to section 100, purpose of the ordinance. And finally, the uses of reasonable use, immediately next door, it's allowed use in Hudson, under their, under their zoning, it's mostly, probably ninety percent residential all around us, other than the vacant land, so we see that we have, we're presenting a reasonable use with this application. And we also believe that we meet the criteria under the second portion of the hardship variance, where you really have no other alternative but what we're presenting, and we see we meet that criteria as well. So with that, unless, will I add anything to the discussion?
Just at the duplex, Len Vigent, for the record.
Thank you.
The duplex you keep referring to is a two pound.
Okay, sorry.
Other market.
Okay.
Questions on board?
Okay, a couple questions. Do you know if any of the state-owned land is being sold by the state along that area?
I, I don't know, but I also have not seen or heard of any declaration of surplus property, which is the first step that the state takes, and then there's a pecking order under state law as to who gets to buy surplus land, and the first is the local towns, and then it goes to local charitable, or the forestries or whatnot, and then it drops down to private developers. But I have not seen that, seen or heard of a declaration in, or at any time.
Is daycare a permitted use in, in that commercial area? Do you know, often?
Well? Family daycare is permitted.
I think so.
In all residential zones, in motion.
Okay. And?
I would tend to disagree with that, but.
You're, um, you're.
Optus six, optus nine kids.
Your description on the, on where the road would be, what you're implying, correct me if I'm wrong, because that's, this is really a question. You suggest that if the variance is not permitted, or not allowed, then the road would, would not be put where it is, it would probably revert back to the old location, is that what you're implying?
No, we would, no, we would, we would have to keep this existing lot as it is.
Okay.
And we would have to bring in the road on this little fifty-foot section here, and then curb the road up like that.
Okay.
Alright, so, and what that would do, and that would allow, that would maintain this curb cut next to the Dalton's house for a future use, which we don't wanna do, but in order to preserve whatever value there may be, although it really isn't, but in order to preserve that, we would have to keep that by.
Why would you do that, Andy? So that you could get another house lot right there?
No, because, because if I.
If you can't modify, they wouldn't change it.
Because I can't change this lot into residential without variance. So I would have to keep this lot as is.
Yep.
Alright?
Go around it.
And so I would, right, I would go around it to the south, and then do my thing in Hudson, I would, you'd never wanna give up a curb cut if you don't know what's gonna happen with the property, so we would keep that curb cut for the future.
I see, so you're essentially, one, one piece of property would, would only have access by Charles Bancroft, because you'd be going around it, and so there'd be two lots that theoretically would not be, have access from this new road that you were talking about, is that correct?
John, am I sure I'm following you? I guess what I was saying a second ago is, would be the worst possible scenario.
Right.
There would be a road in here, and then a road in here.
Okay.
Right, we don't wanna do that, DOT doesn't like it, but we would have the right to do it, because it's a pretty existing lot. So what we have here is, what we're proposing is this road, obviously. I don't know that possibly this lot would take its driveway off of the new road, which would be better than a driveway onto Charles Bancroft. I don't know that for sure, but, you know, we would strive to do that.
That's the part I was confused, because you're talking about having to come in from Charles Bancroft, but you also were talking about building a road, so I thought that, that they would still have access. But the key there is the fact that that original lot would, would stay intact because of that.
It would have to stay the same.
Right.
Because if I don't have a variance to modify the lot to look like that, then I gotta maintain that to a family.
That makes sense.
And then preserve the future access.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Couple quick questions, and you may want, stay, stay up there, please. The line that's going straight across the lots on top, that's the town line?
That's the town line.
So basically, what we're looking at here is, towards the back, are some lots sit in Litchfield.
In Hudson.
Where it's commercial, and the other half of the lot sits in Hudson, where it's residential.
Yes.
Hold on. And if that were to happen in Litchfield, we've seen those, but we haven't really seen it where there was a town line involved. Okay. You said something about everything was moving forward, but it sounded like they're actually waiting to get wetland permits in order to be able to put the roads in and so forth, is that true?
The process is not unlike the process here in Litchfield. First off, it's the Conservation Commission to comment on the wetland crossing that goes, then the application goes to the zoning board. So the Conservation Commission have taken a site walk, Hudson Conservation Commission have taken a site walk to look, that was done maybe two, three weeks ago. An application is going in within the next two or three weeks from the Keats Nordstrom Engineering Firm to Hudson to begin the process for the zoning board wetland special exception, and provided that's approved, which we believe it will, then the planning board for the subdivision. Alright, so the, the planning board, so the, the wetland special exception is just gonna focus on this crossing.
Yeah, but it's kinda critical to the whole.
No, 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 hang on, hang on. The wetland special exception, that the zoning board will approve or not approve, let's say they approve it, only focuses on the wetland crossing.
Right.
The design of the project comes a little bit later to the planning board, and the design of the project will either be what you see here today, or it'll be what we're talking, just talking about with John Deveraux, it'll be just a road coming in like that, spurting around this lot. Alright, which, again, I know Hudson doesn't wanna see that, DOT doesn't wanna see that, but that's, that's how that will play out. So if this application tonight goes forward, then this road goes forward. If this application tonight doesn't go forward, then the road to the Hudson planning board will do something like that, and then we preserve this roadway just south of the Dalton property.
Yeah, I get all that, but i- if the Hudson doesn't approve the wetland crossing for the road at all, then you don't have access, right?
Well, that's true, but we, we expect that they will approve it. It's already, it's already been reviewed by Hudson's staff, there's no other access point that makes any sense to, you know, get back to here. We believe that's gonna get approved. That's Deveraux.
And on the field walk, they say, they don't feel there's a whole set of problems.
You don't have anything in writing to that effect, though, huh?
Not yet.
Just one side of it.
Yeah.
Pretty soon.
Yeah, I know, I know, I'm just a little concerned, it almost, I mean, there's a law writing on that, and what you're asking us to do essentially is, is approve a non-conforming use that is, is really based on something that hasn't happened, which is approval of the road.
Well.
I think.
I hear what you're saying, but we have to start somewhere.
I know.
This is a, one of the trickier projects I've done, because I got two towns with multiple boards. So we're gonna have, we're gonna have this issue again, right, because we're gonna have one board making a decision based upon something that has or hasn't happened, no matter what we do with this thing.
Do our decisions, can we make our decisions contingent upon their approval of the road?
I don't know. I assume we could, I don't know if the applicant would be comfortable with something like that.
I'm not sure if the road matters in our decision.
Right, I would, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I was gonna say exactly that, because remember, we're not at the design phase, we're not, we're not the planning board, alright, we're not laying out this road, designing the road, the planning board may say, you know, shift it here, shift it there. We're just looking at our variance with respect to the residential, the commercial land in Litchfield, that's all.
Yeah, I know, but a lot of, and again, I don't wanna harp too much on this point, but I thought quite a bit of emphasis was placed on the fact that, well, we're gonna have all these houses over here, which are permitted use, it doesn't make sense to bring businesses in over here, but, you know, you don't know if you're gonna have those houses until you get the road, right? So.
Well, that's, that's true, we could get tonight, but remember, it's a permitted use in Hudson. If they're allowed by right.
Oh no, I get that, I get that.
Wetland special exception, is a special exception, you meet the criteria, it's allowed by right. So we're confident that we're gonna get this. And then third, again, we're not at the design, we're just here for zoning tonight.
Yeah, and that, and that stream goes right through, it's not like you can move it down three hundred feet to stay away from the crossing, it goes all the way to the river. So there's, there's no leeway of movement, it doesn't benefit anyone.
No, I get it. I get it, I just hope you understand where I'm coming from, too. You mentioned, oh, you mentioned. You mentioned, uh, oh, you mentioned some statements from Joan and Jack. You wouldn't happen to have anything in writing from the road agent or Conservation Commission in Litchfield? No.
No.
And how would, how would Jones, Jones was referencing the cul-de-sac, which isn't in Litchfield, so.
Oh, it is.
No, no.
It's not, but.
Litchfield is north of that line.
But that was, that was her.
She was just giving her opinion.
Gee, wouldn't it be nice if we could?
Well, yeah, it was, my, my question to her was, um, are you, oh, is there anything of that wetland that would cause you to cross? That would, are you aware of any burnout pools? Have you, have you?
Hold on one second. Go ahead.
Ready?
Yeah, good, thank you.
Have you come across anything that would, you know, that, that would flag us or anything? And she said, no, you know, she, she was familiar with it. Um, nothing bothers and then the cul-de-sac comment came out, held up.
Okay. Um, you also made a couple of comments about, um, the buffers. I mean, that's all stuff that you guys are committed to doing for the Wilson property on the north or south, whatever it is.
Yeah, again, um, we're not at planning board, um, design, but, um, along this path, I will say that every board I go to will make that commitment. The Wilsons are good people. Uh, they've come to town many times to voice their concern about something like that. And it's, uh, it's beneficial to the homeowners to have a workar providing so they don't see the tractors or trucks doing that thing on the fields.
I have to ask, if in twelve years, the circumstantial highway comes in, what would happen to this property? Would anything, would, would you have to plan differently for it or provide a buffer?
I'd be happy myself. I'm gonna build a house there myself. It doesn't affect me. It makes it so you can access the highways and you go. I don't, I don't, uh, another quick thought on that, on the other side of that town, old land.
Yeah.
We just put a bunch of old folks. Okay, it's in and there.
On the other side of the, of what would be the circumstantial highway?
Correct.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah, season, season citizen.
Kevin Lynn's code enforcement officer down in Litchfield. Always gotta get his two cents in.
I heard it. He said old folks.
Just want to clarify that I said old people.
Yes, yes.
I know I'm old too.
Yeah, you're one of them.
I'm one of those old folks.
So that property would be to the highway just as this property would be.
Exactly, right.
Yeah, it's a big square swath, yeah.
Okay, I'm sure you have some questions. You don't have any questions?
I'm just reading.
At the end of your project, it has, has, uh, fifty-four units.
Um, what I'd like to do is, uh, ask, uh, actually Attorney Prohm, do you have anything further before I ask for public input?
Nothing right now.
I'd like to take public input, um, either for or against the application here. Um, if you do have input, please state your name and address. Anybody? Go ahead, please. Name and address.
I own, it was Dalton. I own Dalton, right? Uh, when they took mine, when they come and looked at my land, they are gonna take a little piece behind me, from the highway. So, yeah.
And offwards.
And offwards.
The state sent that.
State sent that.
So can you show me what you're talking about on the map then?
I ain't sure where. But.
No, it is.
This, they're gonna take me out for the highway. Part of this here. It's supposed to be part of the highway. They told me all that too.
If in twelve years they decide to.
Well, twelve years, I've been waiting forty years now. So it's getting close. And I think we should keep commercial in town. I know what a trouble it was to put my business there. And somebody, I, gotta have some commercial. That's the only thing I said. A job will make sure the state, I've been told before I sell, I have to check with the state. So you must be thinking some of this.
Before you sell, you have to check with the state. That sounds kind of weird.
Is that a deed restriction?
Huh?
Is that, is that in your deed under restriction?
No, the state sent me a what, registered what.
Suggesting you that? Suggesting that they would?
That was twenty years ago.
You have, you have properties.
That was twenty years ago.
I was this big.
You own these properties. I'm sorry, hold on guys. Hold on guys, please. You own these properties. Have you ever been told that before you sell those lots, you have to check with the state?
Absolutely not, unless they bought a first right of refusal.
Okay. Um, do you have any comment to that, Mr. Attorney Prohm?
Uh, I, I can answer that, Mr. Chairman, but, uh, I don't know if you want to keep it open to the public before I came in and replied.
Uh, you, you go ahead. You're just responding to the public input.
Uh, again, for the record, Attorney Prohm, um, I have not done title on the Dalton property. I have no reason to doubt what Mr. Dalton, uh, has said. We have, um, a title insurance policy on the big lot. I've, Land Digit picked these up in two pieces, the, the big, um, twenty acre lot and, and the two family. The title, um, policy, uh, that I'm going to give to the board, um, has, uh, the mortgage, it lists the mortgages that's on there, a list of various encumbrances that are on there. There's nothing on it from the state or the actual, uh, writing any, uh, rights and first refusal rights and notice, uh, or, or anything that could, uh, imply that there's some right of the state to, uh, come after this thing.
That's good.
For the record, um.
Lost our state count, I don't think you saw.
I, I want to, if you want to preserve anything, I mean, if you do that, but there's no indication that.
I think you're right. Uh, we'll call this exhibit I. Uh, you'll let us put this in the record?
Yeah, I, I, I did have another comment. Um, we expect to, uh, commercial property, but I'll wait till, uh, record.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Any other comments?
Yep. Any other comments from, uh, public, public input? No? Any follow-up?
Just in response to the one comment from Mr. Dalton, I don't disagree that it's very healthy for our town to preserve commercial land, um, for future needs, uh, you know, for generations to come. I provided to you a Litchfield, um, zoning map, um, I forget what the good it's called.
Sorry, you go.
Uh, we, we are talking about six acres and a very unique, uh, and difficult, um, property to develop for commercial purposes. If you look at the, um, zoning map, immediately north of the Annandale, um, project, um, that old person's project Kevin Lynn spoke of. There are, there are hundreds of acres of commercial properties available for the Wilson farm, um, is the older Jonas farm, it's own commercial. Um, there's a, there's a lot of commercial land at the north end of town, Melston, like Car, the Colley property, the property south of that. The Charbonneau, the continent paving operation is a huge, uh, commercial and could be used in future water purposes. So let's definitely that while there is always the concern to preserve commercial for the future, um, this particular site, the remainder of all the commercial that we have, knocking out these six acres. Frankly, honestly, we, we need to think, you know, is this really ever going to turn into commercial use? We don't say that this will have any impact from now, in future commercial uses of the town.
Fair enough.
And that's all I have on the board. Another question, please.
I'm sure Mrs. Dalton had a comment.
Do we?
Yeah, Mrs. Dalton had a question.
Okay.
Mrs. Dalton, and, uh, I just wanted to tell them that I appreciate the idea that the road is going down here instead of next to our house.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate that input. Yeah, did you have anything?
No, I just wanted to make sure she was heard, that's all.
Okay, I apologize. Go ahead.
Technical point from the planning board, one of the things that happened this year, as you, you should know, in the zoning, Kevin Lynn, also the Billy Inspector, and also resident of three eight, we won't jump any block there, why? And I'm a senior citizen, I'm late, okay? But the planning board did this year too, and they missed, and I want to say they missed this piece. They tried to get rid of the split zones, okay, all through town. We had a subdivision, just reading this in old Gary Road, where I got, and went to the board, it got approved. One of those lots you could not build on residential, it was commercial. Most of the other four lots were all commercial in the back, but they could put their house in Hudson. There was enough room for Hudson zoning to get the house on it. Okay, so this year, we, we zoned it the way it should have been. We followed the, the line, Sanders and everything else. So they looked at this, it's a notch in town as well. The zoning changes we had were, we noticed they followed the lines. We got rid of the split zone and all this stuff, which created a lot of problems. So I'll be honest with you, talking to the vice chairman for, and a couple of members of the board, I said, we think we may have missed one, because there was that little big loop at the end of town. We didn't see that little piece in there, I'll be honest. I don't make up about it. Just a thought, thought.
You're talking about speaking with the planning board, you mean?
Yeah, and when I spoke to him. Okay?
Very good. Thank you for that input. Anybody else? Okay, if nobody has anything, we'll close public input at this point and the board will deliberate. Do I have a motion to close public input?
I'll make a motion to close public input.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
I second it.
Oppose. Motion carries five zero zero. Anybody feel they have enough information here to make a decision or anybody feel they have enough information to not make a decision? Let me ask that.
All right. I think, I think we received a lot of information that doesn't apply. Um, the, the Wilson farm information doesn't apply, um, where the road, uh, is located doesn't apply. What really applies whether, um, the, they're allowed to build houses below the line and we are restricting them not to where, build houses above the line. So, um, regardless of, of where the road is or what the, the, um, water permit is and their ability to, to build that section. We are, we're looking at this property that's split and saying, is it, is it a, um, is it an issue that, that they have this property where part of it is a lot, is, is buildable for resident and part of it isn't?
I agree with you, although I, I do feel as though the information on the abutters, uh, I personally tend to look for, um, whether there's support or, um, non-support.
Oh, yeah, that, that absolutely applies.
Certainly hearing from, hearing from.
But they're not in a butter. Wilsons are actually on the south side of Hudson's.
Oh, okay.
Is it, is it just, uh, residential?
Either way, um.
Right, and just to add, I mean, only information I think is relevant is we have those six lots, split zone, part, and every single one of those lots, part of it is residential for Hudson. And then, so our question basically to the variance is for a change of use, given that there's split lots with part already deemed to be used residential from Hudson. Are we going to say that we're going to allow that or not?
Agreed.
I mean, all the other stuff that we were given about the circumstantial, um, circumstantial highway and everything else like that, Wilson's farm, I don't think it's necessarily relevant except for, I'm gonna allow a change of use.
Agreed. And we start to hear more and more about the whole commercial property question, but that's not what this board is here to decide whether it should or shouldn't be zoned commercial.
Well, it is zoned.
Or, or the whole, right.
In Litchfield, it's zoned commercial right now.
Yeah, I get that.
So I think one of the most poignant question is, do we want to allow commercial property that people value in town to now be used as residential? Given the circumstances of those lots where half of it is already deemed to be used residential.
Right. All right, so I think we framed the issue. Um, and again, I feel confident that I have a vote. So do we have any motion either for or against?
I will make a motion to approve, um, the request for a variance for case number two thousand one four dash O one.
Okay, um, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, so the motion carries, the application is approved by a vote of five zero zero. Um, what we need to do now is just nail down the actual, um, points for the decision.
And before we go forward, I know there's talk about conditions on that. Is that something that we want to further consider?
E- exactly. That's at the end of the, no, it's a decision. Um, I, I personally do. Um, I am, my preference would have been to see this come forward after the road was approved. And my concern is, is that once we approve this and the road doesn't go through, we still turn those lots into residential use.
But then it would be just one house lot.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I don't know that, but I guess it's just my concern. I don't know if I'm right or wrong. So to me, that's one of the stipulations is that the road gets approved. Uh, you know, I guess my only reservation there is that, is that, is that right? Is that fair? Uh, you know, as far as vegetation in the cul-de-sac or buffer zones to the farmland, um, I don't know if that's something we want to involve in. I just leave that up to the planning board.
I think the buffer zone all had to do with Hudson, though. They had nothing to do with Litchfield.
No, it has a lot to do with Litchfield too, because there should be a buffer zone on the, uh, wetland issue in the third lot back.
That would be a planning board issue.
Yeah, it's a different kind of buffer zone.
Yeah, I don't even know what happens once they start trying to put a lot on, or a house on there, what the setbacks are and things like that. That's down the road, I suppose. I don't know. I mean, do you put a stipulation on the road?
They didn't ask us to approve a wetlands, um, violation or, or.
No.
For the Litchfield side, so.
Well, I think, and I, I may be wrong, but that's just proposed. Right now, it's just two separate lots, big lots, one ten acres in Hudson, one six acres in Litchfield. That has yet to be divided. I think that's the proposed division of those lots.
That's true. Was Plan A, um, actually what I'd like to do is ask a, a question of the applicant.
That's all we have today.
Right.
That's all we have today. Exactly.
So it hasn't been approved that you can have.
That's right.
Six or whatever it was on the other side, house lots yet. Our question is that top portion, can that now be used as residential? It's the only question before us. But back to the stipulation.
Right, with or without the road? I don't care. I can go either way without the road. Uh, I, I think in the end, you still look at the property itself and the fact that they're split. And if I had seen this and it was Litchfield on both sides and one half was commercial and the other half was residential, you know, I'm looking at that and how I would decide that. And I would, you know, in this case, I would approve it with or without the road, so. I guess I could pull, pull the whole stipulation thing back. Now do you go with it?
I, I would.
Just approve it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I agree with that.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Hope to build two houses for my daughters and yourself. Just like a babysitter.
Well, I mean, in this case, I think the decision was made, it was made based on the information that was provided, so I think, uh, I think, you know, you guys. It's kind of hard when you got a lot that's on one side you're standing on and it's okay and the other side it's not. It's pretty tough which way you go with that. I don't think so. Uh, you'll get a, a, a notice of the decision sent to you in mail and, um, you know, you have the thirty day week period, et cetera, et cetera. You guys know all that. You've been here before.
What more permit do you have, though?
Yeah, I'm sure. Um, but thank you very much for the information. It was helpful.
Thank you.
How do you feel?
Celebrating my birthday, am I?
Yeah, happy birthday.
Wow, happy birthday.
Do you want to go through this now or?
Can, can we bang it out quick enough?
D and E, so I need a list of the exhibits. Did you do that D and then that one E?
I believe I did. And the order that I got it was, uh.
I didn't know you separated the two of those.
A, B, C was this one.
You did that one, alright, so. D.
All right, the first one, the granting of the variance will not be contrary to the public interest because.
Because, because, because.
Because, because, because.
Don't go ringsy-dos. I'm not sure if they're throwing on a trophy right out of the application. We'll have it right out of the mat and, and see a whole beer. I'd, I'd plagiarize as much of that as possible.
I don't mind using the whole thing.
Most of it is. Most of it's good.
Because, I just got to type it in there. Day around this property is primarily residential, apparently.
Okay, if you prefer, I'll just take care of this for my off time.
You want to do it?
Yeah.
All right, I can all, it's all set up. That's fine.
Save that, and when you do, you should find, find, uh, two thousand fourteen dash oh two.
Okay.
Hey, doing anything?
LPC's not working.
John, can you answer one thing? Make a motion to approve.
I did, yes, after, because I noticed there was a second, and I, I'm the second one. That's all I do, is secondary.
This is an old, I'm not using, this is a version of Windows, I guess. What, um, Florida trip?
Oh, actually, if you, um, go back, cancel that. If you go back and open, it'll already have it in there, I think I just did.
Thorough?
Yeah, that's the one.
Thorough, okay. Got it.
All right. Okay, thank you for being patient, appreciate it. Uh, what we will do now is let's get started on case two thousand fourteen dash oh two. This is. Oh, before we get started, actually, or I'll hand you this, if that's okay with you.
Holy cow, is this like a commercial use?
Uh, I don't know, but, I'm not sure how, um, the check that I was given for postal was more than was necessary. They don't give change, so I have it in stamps.
I thought those were tickets to like the Bruins or something.
And that'd be nice.
If so, there's no good.
We'll find good use for it.
Yeah, I thought you would.
This is case number two thousand fourteen oh two. Name of applicant, Thoree Properties LLC, sixteen Colby Road, Litchfield, New Hampshire. The owner is the same. Location of the property, sixteen Colby Road, map twenty, lot twenty-nine. Description of property, forty-four thousand five hundred thirty-nine square feet, currently used for a residential.
Can I close the door?
Yes. Would you mind closing the door, please? Thanks.
This is an application for a variance. A variance is requested from Article eight hundred, section eight zero one of the zoning ordinance to permit, permitted uses in northern commercial district does not include storage building.
In the southern, northern, sorry, what commercial district is it in?
This is northern.
Yeah, it's up there, okay, Colby Road.
I think it's northern, yeah.
Thank you.
Existing law in record is.
It's a southwestern commercial zone. Is that, is that an error, or is that a?
Uh, must be an error.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll just. Oh shoot, that means, uh, the public knows it's probably an error, so, oh well. So this is, this is in the northern commercial.
I'd say northern, good.
Yeah.
I don't know what I copied and pasted in there, but it didn't, it's not good. Okay. You may proceed.
Okay, for the record, my name is Sultan Farnwell, Farwell Engineering Services. Here to represent Renee Thoree, Thoree Properties. He currently owns the property to the left, which is Optimum Building Solution, which is a drywall company among, correct?
Drywall building system.
Uh, and he's looking to use, propose a warehouse on this property, which he also owns, to store material, it's going to be a storage building for this. Storage is not allowed in the northern commercial district, and we are seeking relief from that. This is on Colby Road, which is across from Roberts Road. It's a one acre site. There's currently a residential building on it. There are, Tim's Turf is across the street, and I believe there's another warehouse type of facility, or storage type of facility to the right, or to the east.
So Tim's Turf is on the lower end of the map right there, right?
It would be right here.
Yep.
And then the bread company is over there, right?
It would be right around here.
Is that where you were talking about, the other storage company?
Aerial photograph of the property. Just showing how it looks like now. Uh, there's a couple of buildings here that have been removed since this aerial photograph was taken, so that's why they're not on the plan. Optimum is here. Proposing access will be from the parking lot to the rear of the site. There will be no direct access, uh, this will be fenced and separated. At this time, we have not found a complete survey and wetland delineation of the site, because we're, we're just seeking the use relief at this time. If we get the opportunity to move forward, if we get a positive response from the zoning board, we will be moving forward to the planning board and the complete plan, be prepared for that, and go through the process. But this is the beginning of the process, is to seek, uh, relief for a use variance where it's not allowed in the northern commercial district. Also, at this time, we are uncertain, I put a proposed, uh, storage building on there, but we're uncertain as to the size, uh, what's shown on there, approximately six thousand square feet.
Is there any idea what type of material would be stored there? Just drywall and?
Uh, crucible cement products.
Metal stud.
No chemicals, no hazardous waste, just dry materials. Yeah, as far as the building code is concerned, it'd be low, low hazardous storage material.
Would it be for retail after, or is that for your personal business?
It's just for warehouses. I'm sorry?
For you.
Of course, standing, I just.
Commercial industrial.
This one doesn't. This exists where, this is on this side.
That's right.
The board would like to assess, I'd like to go through the, uh, variance criteria.
You may have some questions before you do that, so why don't we just pause for a moment? Because I do hear some discussion, do we have any questions?
I was just, I was just wondering. And so, my, my conclusion was the same thing, is that storage is considered commercial industrial, is that? Because that's what we just.
I asked, well, if this does, if this is commercial, where do we, where do we allow storage? Because you pointed out storage.
Right.
And we do allow it in the northern commercial district, in the northern commercial industrial service district, but not in the northern district.
That's correct.
Did you write this?
Where's the northern commercial, what page do you have?
Page twenty-seven, uh, nine fifty.
So if you were to try to show us the northern commercial industrial district on the colored map, where is it?
Well, it's there versus there, and you see the little dot next to the C?
Yeah.
That's where this property is.
That's where the property is?
And that's where all the warehouses in town is.
It's in the commercial, not in the industrial.
Go figure.
Go figure.
Yeah, yeah.
I would replace, when this block did.
What, what made somebody differentiate one versus the other?
Commercial from commercial industrial?
Yeah.
Good question.
It's like gray and light gray.
Yeah.
It's tough in the past that they don't allow.
It's ugly and really ugly.
Due to his budget.
Okay. Well, you talked about the size of the building, said you're really not sure. But for the purposes of this hearing, you know, if a decision was made in favor, it would probably be with some stipulation, with some size, I mean.
Well, that's approximately five eighty-eighty.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm getting at, so we would need to put some number around that, just so you know.
I think it's going to be more dictated by the restrictions, we don't know the wetland.
See, that, that's probably.
It is just a use.
I think that's probably the only concern, in my own opinion, is that the wetlands are right in there, so.
Right around the, the two sides.
So that what you stored would be more important than how big it was, in my opinion, you know what I mean? Again, that's my opinion, not really necessarily the board speaking.
I mean, if you go back to the nine, this, uh, nine hundred section?
Yeah.
They do have a restriction of fifty-six feet, maximum building height is fifty-six feet for the. The northern commercial industrial service district.
No, we know you're not in it, but we're trying to look for what the town was attempting to do with this.
So now, if you look at the northern commercial industrial service district, which allows warehouses, that has a restriction for building height of fifty-six feet.
Yes, it would be below.
Okay, but no, because we were just asking about feet. So I'm saying, if we're looking at the questions coming up, well, if we allow it in the northern commercial industrial, but not in the northern commercial district, and we are inclined to allow that, I think part of the stipulation would be coincide in what the northern commercial industrial district allows with warehouses.
That's stipulation.
That's a very good idea.
That's why I was bringing that up. But that's here, and it's allowed, the warehouses are allowed there, I think we'd be prudent to maybe put something like that in the decision if we get that.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, well, you said there's a residential unit on that property?
Yes, there is, towards the Colby Road. The white, the white roof structure.
That, that's a house in, in commercial.
Is that going to stay?
It is going to stay.
It's going to stay, okay.
Okay.
Is that, you own that too, is that part of your business, that house?
We all have properties.
Okay, any other questions? All right, why don't you go ahead and address the criteria?
I, I guess if I wanted to say, if you are, wanted to put a square footage limit, that we would, uh, request that it be eighty by a hundred, or eight thousand square feet, we would feel comfortable with not going over that, but, uh.
So proposing to construct an approximate, or not more than eight thousand square foot warehouse?
All right, uh, request for a variance. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest because the storage building will be for non-hazardous storage of building materials. Not many people will be there. If we do need water and septic, we will utilize the abutting lot, but at this time, we're not certain as to what we need. Uh, the spirit of the ordinance is, is observed because the warehouse will be in support of the existing business. I tried to look at the zoning ordinance for this. The zone is intended to provide for accessible, well-planned area for local community shopping functions, cluster of shops or small-scale shopping centers, as well as individual shops are encouraged in this zone. This is not really what's happening in this area, I think this has gone into a separate direction, it does blend in well with the neighborhood, as we talked about. There are other commercial operations happening on Colby Road. Substantial justice will be done, allowing the warehouse will allow for the growth of a company in Litchfield. The warehouse is needed to enhance the existing business. The values of surrounding properties will not be diminished because this is a new building, similar to the buildings in the surrounding area. Access will be from the parking lot to the rear, so there will be no direct vehicular access through the site.
So that will go through the planning board, as far as how the building is situated on the lot, correct?
Absolutely.
So, we don't have to worry so much about that.
Am I correct that the bread, the bread factory there is a bunch of warehouses?
That's right, it's on this side and it's all warehouses.
But it's all warehouses, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
How big? Do you know?
Warehouses over there?
Bigger than eighty by a hundred?
Bigger than this will be.
Do you want a blue building?
Yeah.
And that's part of his property, I thought that was his.
What's in there?
It's separate.
What are they doing there?
What's in there? Piece that's on the corner?
Okay, because it's bigger than, it's another building, it's just two separate, so he doesn't own the bread factory.
Little, literal enforcement of the provision of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. We thought A was more appropriate, the ordinance did not allow for a reasonable use such as this, as is a well-planned use that will not be detrimental to the town, it blends in well with the surrounding uses, the proposed use is a reasonable one, as than is happening in the other lots. And due to this property.
What's, uh, the white building, that, that, with the tan roof that's right there on the left of the house?
That's going, uh, is it right here?
No, the big one.
Is that?
Yeah.
That's my office.
Okay.
That's the current office we have there, the lot line.
How big is that? I mean, that looks about the same size as what you're proposing for storage, or?
About fifty by seven or eight.
Oh, that's pretty good size too, huh, interesting, okay.
That's only office space mostly right there.
Yeah, okay.
Which is allowed.
Yeah, there you go. All right, um, I'm going to ask for public input. Do we have any public input out there, either in favor or against?
Does Mr. Don't you have an opinion?
Because the code enforcement officer, you know.
You're the one.
The elderly one.
What do you got?
I'm, uh, zone-wise, I'm not here today, but it's on. All my, all my warehousing in this town that we have now, exactly, is right next to everything we see right here.
Yeah.
Kid building, there's a site right now that's approved in oh six, for storage. Wasn't permitted use, but somehow it ended up being an accessory use, an admitted use, and I still can't tell that one. But it's done, okay? But that's it, see, that's, that one there, yeah. That caught me off guard, but it got the board, the planning board, group, agreed with it, and it made sense. Add on, in this case here, it's just that there's a lot lot. And it's a separate lot, that's why, it's a separate use and lot, and then the other, it's still all by the same roof. That's why you're here today, and if you're detached storage.
So are you saying that the other lot permits storage right now?
As it is now, when this all the zoning is written, if he wanted to put a warehouse on his land,
Yeah.
on the other side?
Yeah.
He couldn't do it unless he came back.
Why don't you keep that with your book?
Is there outside storage there now?
Correct.
So you can, you can do outside storage, but you cannot do?
Warehousing is separate structure, that kind of, is he, I've had this heard.
And once you have to go for a building permit, right, then they have to review it.
Yeah. So you would take, basically you would take your outside storage and put it in your new warehouse, at that point?
Somebody. This, from my understanding, you see, I'm very familiar with the construction material that he's talking about. If you're in the, you're, you're in the construction, you're commercial.
Yeah.
It's insulation, metal studs, chit-chat, non-hazardous, non, it's very low hazard use. That's the whole purpose, similar to what's there now.
Do you have an opinion about the eight thousand square feet that they're suggesting?
I don't have, I have no issue with that at all. It's very simple built, eight thousand, you go up to ten thousand square feet, or more without a sprinkler system? His use doesn't even qualify for, I, as a duty. He can build it without a fire suppression system, and there's the fire alarm system by the way. By the state building codes and fire codes.
Okay.
I, I just have one more question. The, the building that you're talking about, would it have more office space in it?
No.
Okay.
All right, no other public input?
I'll make a motion to close public input.
A second.
You all set before we close public input?
I believe so.
Okay, all right, I have a motion to close public input, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, public input closed. Well, we have enough information to make a decision, everybody feel comfortable with that?
I do, but before, the one thing I just want to make sure that board is aware of again, um, the building height, the district that it's in now is thirty-five. If it was in the commercial industrial district, it would be fifty-six. So if we put a stipulation on, which I'd be inclined to do, the board went for it that way, would we want to put thirty-five, would we want to put fifty-six, some number in between?
Well, I, I would say minimum it's like a not to exceed those definitions that are in that other, the bordering district.
Which is fifty-six.
Which is what?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six?
But where it is now, it's thirty-five.
Yeah, well, so we're doing a not to exceed, but then I think we're leaving it up to the planning board to actually decide what fits with the character, right?
Right.
Isn't the planning board the one who dictates?
The building.
Going to dictate the height and all that, do they?
No, because this is a zoning ordinance, I'm going to say no.
Okay.
Because it's, it's spelled out in the zoning ordinance how high the building height can be.
Can be, but in this case, once this particular application reaches the planning board, aren't they actually going to sit there and say, well?
Maximum building height is thirty-five feet.
Except for structures not intended for human occupation.
Right, and this is a warehouse, so this isn't.
Not intended, so it's kind of, that's what this is, this is not intended.
Right, so my question is, it's thirty-five where it is now.
Oh, as a rule, as a general rule.
Right, it's thirty-five maximum.
Right.
If it was in the northern commercial industrial, it would be fifty-six.
Right.
So my question is, do we want to keep it thirty-five? Do we want to say anything about the building height, or just leave it? We'll let him have it, if we do, then he's going to be limited to the thirty-five feet.
I would think that we would provide, if we're allowing storage, that'd be similar. I would think that we would provide, for allowing storage that'd be similar to our commercial industrial, we would quote the, the ordinance associated with commercial.
Well, that's what, that would need to be a stipulation, cause if we don't stipulate, then he's gonna be subject to the thirty-five.
That's why, yeah, so I'm, I, I would be in favor of, of making some reference that it, it conforms to the.
Building height must be consistent with the restrictions noted in the northern.
Well, it's not just building, all right, it's everything, that's in, that's, that's for warehousing, that's probably in.
But.
Yeah, for storage of warehouses.
But now, if you're gonna open that can of worms, um, there's a lot of differences between building setback and everything else, between the northern commercial and the commercial industrial. So, as far as frontage.
Be specific, you addressed them all.
Well, for example, this, for frontage is five hundred feet for where it is now, for the other one, it is. A hundred and fifty feet.
Hold on, we, all right, then.
So, I'd say.
If we, if we approve it, and then, is it not the planning board's responsibility to approve the type of structure, how the structure's gonna look?
Within the confines of the ordinance, no, so I think.
Over two hundred.
So my thing, my, my only concern is they're saying we're gonna allow it, if we just allow it, then they're gonna be subject to thirty-five feet, and, you know, the frontage and everything else like that, that's what they're gonna be subject to for the warehouse. Is that how we wanna go, or do we want to say, we're going to allow it, provide it whatever we feel that we want to say? But just so we know.
So, yeah.
The zoning, she's, she's correct.
Yeah.
We're looking to put a ware, warehouse use that we allow in this district over here, it'd be fifty-seven feet high, these are unoccupied space, I wanna make, make sure that's clear, it could be the peak, or something, the barn itself now that we deal, is well over thirty-five feet even with the peak, well over, okay, on the adjacent lot, which is the other building. Laura's correct. Their request tonight, what I did, is just allow the use, okay? The use, anything else in that zone would have, have to apply. The judge saying, Laura, Laura, is that we're looking at the use, and for warehousing, and we wanna go up to the fifty-seven feet, okay? It's a question that she had before you, well, I really don't ever have a concern there, but it's actually gonna match the other building, when you start getting the height.
Yeah.
But he's gonna look at that one when he gets into his billing design, the billing type and designs, cause we get into racking, you go only so high, and that's it, then it turns into something else, code-wise, and the planning board won't even address that, that's something that comes to us.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, and if I could add, you know, once, if, cause we're just here for the use.
Yeah.
To allow that, so if we allow the use.
Yeah.
And we don't say anything, then if he looks at his building design, and he says, oh geez, I wanna go higher, he's gonna have to come back. If he says, my frontage, I don't have five hundred frontage, I have less, then he's gonna have to come back.
We're not applying, and we're here for the use.
But, I know, but I just want him to be aware of that, so I feel bad if he has to come back.
I agree.
And again, and again, but that may be something that will happen, depending on what we decide here.
Yeah.
Coming here tonight for the variance, for the, for the use, if you wanna add to the use, comply with the height restriction, as in that, and everything else does not, that's your, that's your call, okay? And then it's done. By his officer, and if he goes to the board, and they go to, and go to the planning board and the site plan, there's two things that we take care of, you said, okay, height, we're gonna go with the height, that's something you can do, boy, his voice blessed a lot of things, okay? And you're done. Anything else, you guys do not talk, blocks, the wetlands all gonna apply, all the height restrictions, setback buffers, dry, driveways, turnarounds, accessibility, that's all the other side.
I'm, I'm missing where you're recommending, are you recommending we add stipulations or not?
I think you should.
Thank you.
I think you should add the height, and that's it, you're done, okay?
Well, what about the other ones though, that's my point. What about the frontage? What about the frontage? Well, the front, it's, it's an existing lot.
It do not apply.
Right, it's a six, it's a lot, so it doesn't matter. And setbacks?
You're just adding to the height.
Right.
Okay, that's it, that's all.
So, I would be.
The use, warehouse, maximum height, no higher than fifty-six feet, that's it.
Yeah, I would be okay with a not to exceed number and lead up to the judgment of the planning board as to what the actual number is gonna be.
And I would also be inclined to put as a stipulation that the use that we're allowing is the exact use that is allowed in here, which is the northern commercial, which is warehouses and storage of non-explosive, non-toxic materials in an enclosed building, that's the use that we're allowing.
That's correct.
And that's what he's requiring.
Right, but I just wanna make that.
So we need to figure out a word there, Laura, cause that's exactly what we wanna approve.
All right, so, can I, I'll make a motion?
Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve application two thousand fourteen oh-two, request for a variance, um, with the stipulation that the warehouse, um, contains non-explosive and non-toxic material in an enclosed building, with a building height not to exceed fifty-six feet.
Second.
You second? Did you second it?
I seconded it.
All right, we have a motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Now you understand that you may have to come back if other things come into play, which is out of our control right now.
Correct, we only know what they are, so.
Right.
Restate your motion so I can type it in as is.
I make a motion to approve.
Yeah, okay.
Case number two thousand fourteen oh-two.
Just the stipulation.
Um, that the warehouse contains non-explosive, non-toxic material in an enclosed building.
Non-explosive and non-toxic.
Non-toxic materials in an enclosed building.
Are you thinking of a tape recorder? You stop talking, okay? Warehouse not contain.
Oh, wait.
Must not contain.
No, non-explosive. Got you, there you go.
Make it.
Just says as listed in the.
There you go, there you go, that's what I really wanted, okay. That's perfect.
With the, and then the building height not to exceed fifty-six feet.
Yeah, that's the important part. So, the verbatim part isn't necessary, the gist of the, the.
The, yeah, right, within the building height not to exceed fifty-six feet.
Okay, got it. Give me a second, you, you continue, you, you were done, you guys are all set.
Yeah, we're all set, we just gotta draft our notice of decision and get that out.
The warehouse must not contain explosive, toxic, that's a negative statement.
This is different, I got it.
Right, I have, I have the stipulation thus far, building height must be consistent with the restrictions noted in the northern commercial district.
Yeah, close this.
Service district not to exceed fifty-six feet, the building must not contain explosive, toxic materials.
Okay.
There you go.
Just put your hand.
There you go.
Where's all the, so you're saying, Laura, we're going into all of that stuff, so.
We didn't put the eight thousand square feet in there, so that's not something I think that we can necessarily dictate, cause it was not dictated in the other district, so.
Yeah, true.
It's not dictated in the northern commercial industrial.
Yeah, that's close.
Be held in mind.
It's not necessary. The planning board's got a lot of latitude here, right? They can say, I don't want that building to be any bigger than five thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Because it, it doesn't, you know, because I gotta make sure it fits with the character of the neighborhood.
Yes, but they, but they have to allow them the fifty-six feet.
Because of what we're.
No, not even not so, because this is building height not to exceed fifty-six feet, I don't think they can say, oh, we don't want it, we, we want it to be fifty feet, because it doesn't comply, but the ordinance says it can be.
Yeah.
So I think they'd be hard pressed to.
We'll see, we're doing a not to exceed number, I think they've got flexibility to say it's only twenty feet, or, or thirty-five because of the.
But anyways.
Well, I thought we gave them some latitude. Leave it up to them.
That's it, big jump?
Yeah.
Yes.
He didn't do anything with that.
Is there any other business to make?
I don't know.
They could all read it.
I don't think we have anything else to do, we've got all our new members, so.
Do we have any training coming up?